As we notice, this meeting, the zoning board of adjustment was sent by email to the Asbury Park Press and the Post Star, our official newspapers, and posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. Steve Roth, Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Greg.
Here.
Mr. Almeida.
Present.
Mr. Lango.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Diorio.
Here.
Mr. Dibbin.
Here.
Mr. O'Neil.
Here.
And Mr. Fitzgerald is asking.
Please join me in this movement of the flag. For the United States of America to the Republic which stands on its own individual with the routine of justice.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 28th meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Exactly.
Mr. Ross.
I'm staying.
Mr. Greg.
I'm staying.
Mr. Almeida.
Yes.
Mr. Lango.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Diorio.
Yes.
Mr. Dibbin.
Yes.
Next, we have the resolution approving the application of Mark Philhauer, 308 14th Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This was memorializing what was approved last week for the debt or last month for demolition of an existing single-family home and construction of a new single-family home. And the only unusual thing about this was, remember, they previously got approval to renovate the house. And then they, after they got the approval, it turned out the foundation was compromised, so it was demolished. And now they had to come back for the approval. And they ultimately ended up getting approval to build the exact same house that was previously approved. But I did say, you know, I know it's hard, and I know it's difficult, and it's frustrating for them. But it really is the right legal circumstances because of the difference between renovating an existing structure and building a new structure. And there really weren't any conditions of note. So if that's acceptable, we can adopt that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Ross.
I'm staying.
Mr. Greg.
I'm staying.
Mr. Almeida.
Yes.
Mr. Lango.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Diorio.
Yes.
Mr. Dibbin.
Yes.
Nice to see you again.
And then to get into the applications, I have a letter requesting an extension. This is from Allison Yar, on November 20th Avenue. She received approvals in 2021 to enclose a top-floor balcony. Her letter states that I'm writing to the zoning board for approvals to extend my variance to enclose my third floor until December of 2025. I am looking to extend the variance approvals on the 20th Avenue because I haven't been able to secure contractor and homeowner conflict at this time and due to the illness of the family. If someone has any questions about it or...
Ted, then the ordinance has changed from 21th till now with what she wants to do to construct.
As far as permits go?
Yeah.
You have a year to start, or do you need an apartment? One has been submitted, and you do nothing within a year, and you need that, you have to do again.
They haven't filed permits yet, so...
Yeah, so this is a felony.
Any questions? Members who approved your last plan, give it to us.
Someone would like to make a motion to...
I'll make that motion.
In second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And then what was the extension for, how long?
Till December of 2025.
Okay. And then, just as we typically do, if you're okay with it, instead of me writing a resolution that has to charge, we can just have an approval letter, just putting that in file. That'll be, I think, quickest, easiest, and most efficient.
The first application we had is Alejandro Silva, 703 13th Avenue. This was a continuation from the June 22nd meeting. The attorney requested that we carry the application to November 30th without taking it to a notice.
And just for the record, he did say he had a scheduling conflict that just arose. And just for the record, he did consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act on that. And just for the record, is there anyone here who had any questions or comments regarding the sufficiency of the notice for that 703 13th Avenue file? Okay. So just for the record, the board secretary and I reviewed the notice and found it to be in order. So we put a jurisdiction to proceed, let alone jurisdiction to carry. So when was the request to carry?
November 30th.
And the attorney did provide consent to extend the timeframe within which the board had to act, has to act.
Can I have a motion to approve the, carry the application?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, just if I ask, is there, is there anyone here on the Alejandro Silva file? Okay. If there is, please come back on...
November 30th.
November 30th. Thank you.
So we're gonna switch the order up, and we're gonna do the application for 709 Ocean Avenue first.
Good. Ameen Matarri, you wanna step forward?
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, client hasn't arrived yet, and the attorney is on his way. He told me to call the tracker, so we would be happy to defer to the next applicant while they arrive.
112 Eighth Avenue. Step forward, please.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as the applicants team comes forward, we recall that we were going to start this during class at a time, but we had a bit of a, we didn't have seven eligible members to vote. So we accepted jurisdiction and continued it, and we advanced the applicants team for their consideration. And there was no substantive testimony presented at that initial night, so no one had listened to any tape. And what we will do is we will mark into the record what we as a board have before us. So A1 is a development application package, and it dated May 19, 2023. A2 is the minor land use zoning permit, and that is dated April 21st, 2023. A3 is the application checklist. A4 is a survey prepared by Formosa Engineering, and that dated October 27, 2022. And last two, A5. A5 is the variance plan prepared by KBA Engineering Services, and it's dated April 17, 2023, consisting of one sheet. And A6 are the plans, floor plans and elevations, prepared by Tom Peterson, architect, and that is dated May 8, 2023. April 17, that is, this is what we have. And what we'll do is we'll swear in. Ted Bianchi, Ted, you're the zoning officer and construction official for the great borough of Belmont. Do you swear that the testimony and information you're about to provide to the extension provider will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide? Thank you.
Kevin, before you start, just for the record, the architect, Tom Peterson, we've done business together for many years. I have no interest in this application as far as contract with the architect.
Okay.
So if you think I need to recuse myself, I will.
Mr. Enkins?
No objection.
Yeah. And I appreciate the disclosure, and just for the record, what I would say, is there anything here that would prevent you from vigilantly and independently reviewing this application?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Variance is, there's a group of A, A something, variance sheet?
Yes.
I don't have, I don't think anybody here asked about it.
The variance plan? Variance planned by KBA Engineering?
KBA.
Yes, sir.
Two by three. Looks like this, looks like this.
April's gonna go see if it is. All right, thank you for that. I have one extra to leave here. Chairman, there.
Yeah, take that out.
Good evening, Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. Mark Davis on behalf of the applicants, Dr. Mrs. Ralph Passipaleti, the orders are 112, 8th Avenue here in the borough. This is an existing property that has a two-family house in the front and a one-family house in the rear, sort of three residential uses at this property presently. The structure dates the early 1900s, and the second floor was added to the front building, which has the two family in the early 1920s, according to these tax records. The proposal tonight is to only address that front building, nothing in the back building, and to enclose the exterior stairs on the west side of that front building. They're open now, and provide a rear addition to the rear of that front building with significant new siding, window, and aesthetic improvements to the structure, as you'll see from the architectural plans developed by Mr. Peterson in his office. That will be before we shortly. The family intends to occupy the front building as their residence as the doctor's medical practice in Princeton slows in the next several years. Related family use will also occur in the second residence at the front, at the front building as well.
I'm sorry, the occupants, I mean, the applicants intend to occupy the rear, you said?
No. We, we, I said they're, they're my fault. Yep. The, the applicants intend to occupy the front structure and related family as well as the front structure.
Okay.
The only unrelated party is in the rear structure currently.
Got it, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. In terms of the current bedroom count, there are three bedrooms on the first floor of the front building, no change proposed. There are three bedrooms on the second floor of the front building, no change proposed. And there are two bedrooms in the rear building, no change proposed. So three, three, and two today, three, three, and two proposed in the future, no change to the bedrooms. And I think there's some significant facts for the board to be considered this evening, and you'll hear that from Mr. Chuba's expert planning testimony a little bit later. First and foremost, this proposal, as submitted to the board, currently meets the borough's floor area ratio FAR requirements. It also meets the building height requirements. It meets the half-story requirements, and significantly proposes to slightly reduce lot coverage and to slightly reduce building coverage. And we think you'll hear from Mr. Chuba's testimony that the standards necessary to approve the expansion of that front structure are met, given these parameters as well. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Mr. Peterson, and have him swear at this time, sir, please.
All right, good evening. If you could just state your name and business address. It's Thomas Peterson. Business address is Sixth Country Lane in Allen, New Jersey. All right, good evening. Raise your right hand. Do you swear that information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide? And just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed architect? That's correct. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to place his credentials on the record, or are you...
I'm happy with his credentials.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Okay. Mr. Peterson, having qualified as an expert with architecture and architectural issues, what can you share with the board about the existing conditions and what this family has proposed for this...
Sure. We have a bunch of photos that I'm gonna go through to show you what's there. I'm sure everybody has been past it, but I'd like to introduce those as evidence, so... All right, so we're up to A7.
A7. Could you describe that, Mr. Peterson, please?
So this is a group of photos of the existing, which I took myself, the existing residents there. And when were they taken, roughly? Uh, within the last year. Okay. So they're an accurate depiction of what exists on... 100%. Thank you. I also have, we have some renderings that we have on the board here that I'm gonna also go over, but rather than having April carry around before, I have, though, these are the very same renderings that I'm gonna be showing everyone. So I'm gonna mark that as A8, two, okay? A8A, A8A, and A8B. And what are, those are renderings? Those are renderings of the proposed development. Okay. And prepared by... By, by, that's not me. Okay. Is there a date on them? Uh, no, but those are within, they were certainly done before the last week, so within the last couple of months. All right. We'll list the dates on them. That's okay. Got it. And I have one extra set, because we're so jealous, so everybody can kind of, just, that's gonna now. And the renderings, I put some reduced copies of those at the back that I put, so... We still, okay. So Mark has kind of gone over a lot of the existing conditions on the property. This is an existing developed property. There are two structures, one in the rear structure, which is a two-bedroom with a one-car garage attached. And then the front structure is currently two-story, two separate units, three bedrooms on each floor. So I'm sure you've all been past it. This is the existing structure right now. It's an older structure. It's in fair condition, but certainly it's not been upgraded or meet any codes that are currently in place. Here's some other pictures of it. This is the look at the back. This is an important picture to look at, because part of our proposal is to expand the second floor above the existing first floor. So there's a first floor, and then there's a second floor, which does not extend over the entire first floor. So part of our proposal is to, is to expand that. This is a picture head-on, looking at the back. As we've mentioned, there's a small cottage or two-bedroom unit in back, which has been rebuilt after Sandy. There was some significant damage there, so that's in very good condition. And then this is just a look at the house in the front, and then you can see compared to what we're proposing for the new renovations.
The bottom pictures show what's proposed, correct?
That's correct, yes. And then I've got a bigger board to show that when I, when I get to that, that part of the... So if you take a look at what's, what's existing there, and I'm gonna go through the floor plans with you. On the front house then, we have an existing covered porch along the first and second floor. However, access to the second floor is through an open stair, which is non-code compliant, an open stair here that goes up to the second floor. Part of our proposal is that... I'm sorry, access to the second floor, you said, is through an open staircase, which is not code compliant? No. Got it, thank you. So it's...
Yes, it is not code compliant.
It is not code compliant. Not building code compliant.
That is the only access to the second floor apartment?
Only access to the second floor apartment. So it, they are two legitimately separate units, so there's no internal connection between the two of them. They have been used as two separate units and two separate rentals up until recently, when the owners purchased the property. So on the first floor, which is an existing rental, there are three existing bedrooms. There's a little access through a mudroom in the back, and then the, the door off of the front. The first floor area of the unit itself, the living area, stays essentially the same. The only difference there is that we are now proposing a new enclosed stairway, which is to be used to get to the second floor. So that doesn't add any living area to the first floor unit, however, it is living area. So that, that now creates a way for whoever's in that second floor unit to be able to come up, enter into a little vestibule here with stairs that go up. Now we can comply with code, you can comply with Egress, and it's, if you take a look at, when I go through the renderings, you'll see it's a much more customary look for a seashore-style home. Other than that, we're doing some reconfiguration of the first floor. It's still three bedrooms, so goes from three-bedroom to three-bedroom, opening up some of the family area and the kitchen area here, you know, create a more defined area for the washer dryer, and give it a more customary layout for what you would expect for modern living styles. The second floor is where we start to have some real action. The second floor is existing three-bedroom, it is a very awkward layout the way it is right now. Well, it's a three-bedroom with a kitchen and bathroom. Here now, these internal stairs lead to an open family area in the front, an open kitchen dining area, which is a very common, typical request for how people like their living areas now. We've created a small, I guess I would call it a master bedroom suite, which is a bedroom which has an attached bath. And then you can see that there's also some other, you know, a common bathroom. We didn't want to have a, any other bathroom facilities, but we do have where you come up the stairs, which is above the area that's enclosed, a little changing room where you come in, so a little shower area and then a little place to change. These areas that we're enclosing for the back, the stairs, I just want to point out, are already covered. So that's already covered area. It's open porch, but it's already building covered, so we're not adding on to that. If anything, to give it some more interest in the front elevation, instead of having the covered porch extend all the way over what we've done, and I'm gonna go over that with the elevations, is push back the covered porch at that area. So what you perceive as the main portion of the house, the two-and-a-half story, the covered porch areas relate to that, and then the covered porch, which is existing in front of the stairs, is actually been cut down by a couple of feet. So that's an aesthetic thing, but it does happen to help us out for building coverage. Also, the building setback here on this side, because we have to replace that, is slightly larger than what it is now. So we're saving a few square feet of building coverage there as well. From there, we are proposing a half-story up above. Right here. So half-story complies with all of the code requirements, the zoning code requirement for the amount that's at five feet. It complies with the building code requirement for space that's at seven feet, and we, as well, we comply with the building height. So as you've all gone up and down that block, you've seen several examples of two-and-a-half-story homes that exist along the block. We're not trying to be any higher than them, but we're not trying to be any more greedy than anyone else with trying to get additional space up here. Up on the top floor, we have an uncovered deck in the front, and then some deck area out the back, which mimics the look of the house, which is one to the east, that also has uncovered deck out back and uncovered deck in front. I'll show you the elevations, and then I'm gonna show you the, the renderings as well. So in terms of elevations, you can see here that the main part, the main element that faces the street is gonna be this portion of the house, and then this is setback. No longer do we have an open stairway here, which tends to be a more temporary look. Now we have a more customary look of the enclosed space there. From the right and left side, you can see the roof line, typical gable roof. We comply with the building height, so we're not going above anything there. And then in the back now, you can see, this is the area where we've added out on the second floor. So let's go back to the plans. When you see this crawlback area here on the second floor, that's the area that is not second-floor space now. We're simply expanding over the first floor. So once again, not adding to building coverage, not encroaching any further rinse of setbacks than we already are. And Joe's gonna go over all the metrics for that, but I just wanted to be, it's important to say that that's a part of the architecture as well. So the renderings show a drastic difference between what exists there now. Take a look at the structure now. It's apparent that that's a dated structure. Our proposal is all new windows, all new siding, all new rail, all new roofing, new gutters along, new stairs coming up here. For all intents and purposes, it will look like a new home, even though it is a major renovation of an existing structure. This is sort of the look from ground level, but because you're at ground level, you can't see a lot, so we also have one here, just to show you that, even though we have a third floor here, we very much try to soften the look of that by keeping these elements small, keeping these little dormers small, so they add just a little touch, a little sparkle to the look of the house, but are not overbearing or it doesn't have a look of a three-story home, which is what we were trying to get.
And Mr. Peterson, could you just go back to that lovely rendering, just, no, that you have right there, right there?
Okay.
Yep. Just the left side again to the board, how you showed, you discussed it in plan view, but in the elevation view.
Yeah.
Could you review with them again, how you brought that back?
Yes.
Because I think that's an important distinction.
So this is, the line of this covered porch here is the existing line of the covered porch. We're not coming out any further. What we're doing is we're taking this part and setting it back a couple of feet. I'd like to say, oh, we did that because of building coverage, but really it's an architectural feature, and we were doing that for the sake of aesthetics and for the sake of appearance, so that when you look at the house, you perceive this as the main element, and all the stuff up here relates to this, and you can see there's a strong symmetry coming all the way down. And then this is to the side, which is not a major element. So it's, you know, an architectural feature as much as anything, but it also saves us a few square feet of coverage there.
Thank you very much.
So, in addition to all of the new siding, in addition to all the new windows and trim and, and, you know, the appearance of being new, this also gives us the opportunity to upgrade the code compliance, building code compliance. So now, with all of the work, we'll be able to comply with the window requirements and the fastener schedules. The windows will also all be rated for new energy code. I know it's not your guys' purview, but it does add to the value of what we're doing. So new energy codes, new walls, the stairs now will also be code compliant. And then as well, if you take a look at the, this part of the structure here, will also comply with the fire rating, which is again, a building code requirement on any lots that are, where homes are within a certain side setback. So that's it.
Any further questions, Chairman, board members, or Mr. Peterson?
I think we finished the testimony?
Yes, sir.
Of all? Yeah.
Unless there are any questions.
Okay, we'll do, we'll do it separately. Start with Chuck Ross.
So just so, where the, you said third, you keep saying third story, but it means the definition of half-story.
Yeah, um, you know, I tell the clients all the time, if you're on the second floor and you walk up a set of stairs, where are you? You're on the third floor, but it's, it's not a third floor. No, it's a half-story. It's a half-story in terms of zoning, and then in terms of building code, it's considered a habit of the law, but it means both of those metrics, yes.
And then you're showing, and I might have missed it, is the building coverage going down just because of that notch out in the front?
It, it goes down because of this.
That, that's it?
Well, and then also, the side yard setback is getting increased slightly. So the, and the reason for that is the width of the covered porch on that side is more than we need for the stairs. We have to rebuild it anyway, so we pulled it back to be compliant stairs on the inside, but we didn't need all of that width, so it does help with side yard setback.
Mr. Greg?
Those were my questions. Is there...
Yeah, so the only washer dryer in the unit is at the top of the stairs on the half-story, it looks like.
Correct.
So every unit will be using that?
Yes.
So every, every unit has access to go up and down those stairs, really? Does that mean... First floor?
Another one in the first floor?
If, if you take a look at... If, if you take a look at the first floor, there's sort of a little mudroom in back.
Oh, I see.
Do they have a washer dryer? That's solely for them, and then for the, for the top unit, the unit that's on the second and third floor, it's up in that, it's up above the area you come in from the stairs. Just, just to, so that you know, there's a door from that foyer area there into this ground floor unit. That is solely for the future when the clients have said, there might be a day when they just want to use the whole front, front house. So it's not meant for the first floor occupant to come in here and then, oh, while I'm at it, I'll wander upstairs. So that would be, if it's a fire-rated door, we have to have new fire rating throughout the house for different, between the different units. That's something else that we'll be able to upgrade to when we go through this renovation, because it certainly is not a fire rating between the units now. So that'll be a fire-rated door, and, you know, who knows, at some point in the future, when they say, you know, this is just going to be our whole family, then that door will be way to here from one end to the other. But up until then, it's a locked door.
And then nothing was proposed to the back house, you didn't talk about?
Back house stays exactly, there's nothing at all.
And then this will like match that sort of a little bit?
It, it will, it will complement it. So the back house, if you were to take a look at the trim and some of the features there, it's more on the, I'm going to say plain side, but this, this will certainly be upscale for a second.
Okay.
I have another question, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Peterson, Steve, I need to ask a question that's maybe answering my plans, but I can't open a book. There just don't have that much room on here. There's, the air conditioning condensers and the possible generator or anything like that that you might be installing on the property, is that compliant?
Oh, yes, yeah, absolutely. You know, yet one more thing that we're able to do as a part of this, and as you guys all know, first of all, it complies with, Joe will go over all setbacks issues and coverage issues and all that. But the newest requirements for heating and cooling equipment is very, very strict. So, again, on top of everything else, this isn't a zoning issue, but it is, in terms of the town, will be a four-point goal with the metrics.
That's all I have.
And Mr. Kachuba, sir, we'll cover that.
Certainly.
Mr. Arvid?
Yep. Mr. Peterson, mechanicals, if you, first floor level, I guess the purpose of this floor, which you stated, is if the homeowner wants to be used as a single-family residence.
Mm-hmm.
Mechanical, so access to the basement is accessible from the first floor occupant and also the second floor?
Well, we'll have a hatch outside.
So the hallway there, is that my, is this my correct answer? The first, the first floor occupant and the second floor occupant occupy the basement, you get into the basement from the hall?
Oh, yes.
And then mechanicals and such are in there?
So mechanicals for the first floor will be there. Mechanicals for the second and third floor will be in the ease of the act.
And no finished base in the basement?
None.
Existing?
It's, it is a rough space, even at my height.
I have one of those, I get it. One of my other questions, look like, obviously, building coverage, lock coverage, et cetera, all includes the area we're in now.
Correct.
It does. This property is located in the plaza? Is this property located in the plaza?
None.
Steve? It's located in the X, sorry. Reflected on Mr. Kachuba's plan.
If there are?
No further questions.
Mr. Lubin?
No further questions.
Okay. Open to the public. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm good.
Mr. O'Neil, I apologize. Questions to the public before we move on? Okay, is there anybody in the public that have questions for the architect regarding this application?
Covered the second floor porch, is that where they're at? Second floor porch?
It was already there.
Oh, okay, so where grandfathered down it?
Thank you, Chairman Appley. Could now call Joseph Kachuba, licensed professional engineer, professional planner.
Good evening.
All right, good evening. You can just state your name and business address?
Joseph Kachuba, KBA Engineering Services, Madison, New Jersey.
Good evening and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to be the truth, best we know, so help you God?
I do.
And just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as?
Both licensed engineer, licensed planner in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Kachuba.
Good evening.
Do you possess any licenses from the state of New Jersey?
Yes, licensed engineer, licensed planner in the state of New Jersey.
Have you given testimony for other boards in this board near professional history?
Many other boards in this board as well, many times.
Sure, good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Great. Mr. Kachuba, I'm wondering if you can just review with the board the variances in connection with this application?
Sir, I'm going to refer to 8-5, which is the variance plan prepared by my office. It's, the second question, it's a 7,500 square foot lot in the R75 zone, compliant lot, it's an interior lot. It's 50 feet frontage. We went through the history that it does contain the two structures containing three units, and I reviewed the historic aerials back to 1933 and agree that the structures have all been there. And the, in fact, I have a rental ad in the Esri Park Press from 1942, seeking for renting out the back unit, so it has been there for quite some time. And I gave it at that price.
Close to price.
Close to price. It is, did they list the price? Uh, no, no price. 1942.
1942, Chairman.
R75 zone, looking at the surrounding area, I do have an aerial that I'll mark as evidence. I don't know which, we have A10.
A10 is A10, A10 is the aerial.
A10 is an aerial exhibit prepared by my office, preparation date September 27th to 23rd. So familiarize the board, 8th Ave down the center, property in question kind of highlighted. Everyone probably familiar with the area. This particular block has a substantial amount of multifamily kind of feel to it or flair. Specifically, the lot in question has the home up front and the dwelling in the rear. The lot immediately to the west has two dwellings on it as well. The lot immediately to the east has two dwellings. The lot east of that, which is actually 108 8th Ave, has two units in the front and a rear stru, a rear structure. So there's three units on that particular property. To the northeast of the property, Lot 111, is a multifamily home, lot, or I'm sorry, lot, lot, 111, 7th Ave. 113, 7th Ave has two homes on it. You have the apartments on the corner, and there's a few other properties that have multiple homes on the property. So it is actually the predominant condition in this particular block to have multiple homes on the property or multiple units. So the existing condition is not out of character with the neighborhood. And again, we're not, one of the main things we look at, we're looking at intensity of the property is the number of bedrooms. We're not increasing that at all from what exists today, we're just improving what exists there, but not increasing the intensity. So it is a pre-existing non-conforming use, predates the zoning of the area. It's also non-conforming with front yard setback, 19.74 where 20s required. Again, we're not touching the front of that, that's staying right where it is. We are improving the porch ever so slightly. The porch right now is 11.74 feet. You're allowed an eight-foot porch, we're at the eight foot three inches, and that's going to comply now. So pushing it back, just when we reframe it and put new material on it, it'll comply. It does have that large existing wraparound porch that goes to 2.8 feet from the west side, specifically looking at the photo package on the left. So this existing porch and the second floor porch are at a side setback of 2.8 feet, which has concerns two ways, one, it's a non-conforming, and secondly, from a fire code perspective, it's not rated to be that close to the adjacent property, so it's also a, considered a fire concern or fire hazard. The combined side setback is 13 feet where 15 required, which will improve slightly. The rear house stays exactly where it is, we're not changing or touching that. The building coverage is 37.2 percent where 25 percent is permitted. That is including both the rear structure and the front. And the lot coverage is 66.69 percent where 55 percent is permitted. And lastly, there's a, an accessory garage there that's non-conforming that we're going to remove. So we are renovating the front home, we're also updating the parking. So there are some site improvements as a result of the application that were not identified through the architectural testimony. We have the porch improving on the side, we have the porch kind of being notched in there, reducing coverage. They, all, all throughout, we're improving materials and the look and the desirable visual environment from 8th Ave. But we're also going to improve the parking. So on the right-hand side of the home, we're going to replace that existing asphalt driveway, which is pretty good disrepair and definitely needs some TLC, with pervious pavers compliant with the ordinance in order to reduce the impervious and stormwater impact on the site. That replacement's going to extend to the rear, and we're going to provide stone parking off to the side where currently, right now, it's kind of bare soil for, for the parking, and it does provide for five parking stalls. So the, the parking orientation in the plot plan is the orientation of parking that's, that's out there today. So there's two vehicles that park facing the rear unit, three vehicles parked towards, facing towards the west. That exists there today, that's what's proposed in the future. You can even see on the aerial photograph, one of the vehicles parked in that area facing towards the west. By virtue of proposing the pervious pavers, we are reducing the pervious coverage or lot coverage to be compliant. That will work more than 10 percent over. So that is certainly an improvement. And the building coverage also reduces by about 1.6 percent by virtue of those changes to the porch and pulling in the side of the home. So all of that, you know, provides improvements.
And I'm sorry, Joe, if I could just, for the lot coverage, are you being compliant or are you still a little over just?
No, well, lot coverage is compliant, building coverage reduces to 35.57 percent.
Yeah, just why did I have, and I could be totally wrong, I had lot coverage going down to 56.8?
Lot coverage reduces to, I'm sorry, yes, 56.8 percent.
And then, so you're over?
So we are over that. We are over in lot coverage. Essentially, that, that overage is to provide a walkway in the front.
But you have less than what you have now.
Correct. So the front walkway, we didn't call for pervious pavers, usually have a nicer paver for the walkway aesthetically. Doesn't really provide much as far as stormwater impact, but that was the intent, was to keep that as a nicer paver for the front entryway.
So it drops, Mr. Kennedy, from current 66.69 percent to 56.8 percent?
Got it.
Approximately a 10 percent reduction. And then the building coverage drops from 37.2 to 35.57.
Yep.
Again, not, not compliant, but improvements and mitigations or mitigants on the two existing non-conforming conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And all moving in the right direction and not increasing the number of bedrooms. The curb cut remains the same. We're going to have a pervious deck in the rear, which there is one there today. So those are the, the site improvements that are also improvements for some of the zoning criteria. So the, the application does require a variance, specifically a D2 variance. The D2 is for the expansion of a non-conforming use. Again, in this case, it is a use variance, but the use is permitted in that it predates zoning, it's the expansion that, that is the concern. And in those types of cases, we're not creating a new non-conforming use, it exists. And the courts have held that testimony should be limited to the extent of that deviation. And what that means is, the board should look, can the site adequately accommodate the expansion? Does it have an impact, a negative impact from the expansion? And in my opinion, it does not have a substantial negative impact by the expansion. Specifically, the rear unit remains the same. The front unit footprint remains the same. And when you compare it to the two homes immediately to the east and west, the depth of the home is actually shallower than the other two homes, and both of those homes are two-story, two and a half story structures. So as far as volume, it'll be very similar to the homes on either side. So by expanding out that second floor, in my opinion, not a detriment, not a detrimental impact to the neighborhood as it does exist, and homes of that size exist even larger throughout the neighborhood. We're not increasing the number of bedrooms, we're improving the parking, we're providing the same number of parking stalls, which is five, which is compliant for the number of bedrooms that we have. We're improving the housing stock, improving the fire resistance, the building code improvements, and eliminating the exterior stair, as Mr. Peterson indicated. I think that's an important item as well. An exterior stair to a second floor really looks and feels like it's an apartment. It doesn't feel like a home, a single-family home in a neighborhood environment. By enclosing that, improving the look of the house, improving the streetscape, it will look more in, in line and more commensurate with the neighborhood and the single-family nature of the neighborhood and, and the look from the street. So in my opinion, those are all definitely improvements for the application and justify the, the grant of the variance. Secondly, we look at the bulk variances, again, all of those bulk variances that we're requesting are being pulled in. We're not increasing any of the bulks as a result of the application. In fact, we're decreasing, which is a promotion to the general overall. Try to move in the right direction, bring in more non-conforming. In my opinion, the variances promote the C2 criteria, which is the better planning criteria, where we promote the purposes of zoning found in Section 2 of Manu, Municipal Land use law. In my opinion, this promotes purpose A, the general welfare. Purpose C, to promote appropriate population densities. And purpose E, or, I'm sorry, I promotes a desirable visual environment. So all of the improvements here promote planning. All of the non-conformities are being improved, not increased. And it has accommodated since the 20s, the quantity of bedrooms here, without impact to the neighborhood, and will continue to do so for the future. So in my opinion, the variances can be granted. And I also don't believe there'll be any detriment to the public good as a result of the application as far as impact to airlight and open space. Again, we're, once completed, it'll be similar in volume to the homes on the street and homes next door on either side. Two and a half stories is typical for this neighborhood, the height fully complies. Most importantly, the FAR complies, which is another view of intensity. So we're complying with the ordinance there. So in my opinion, this certainly does not have a detriment to the public good, nor will have, will substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Kachuba. Chairman, no further questions of Mr. Kachuba at this time.
Okay, any of the testimony?
I know the testimony's sort of complete.
Complete. Okay. Kevin, I'm going to go to board comments?
Sure.
Okay.
I, I guess, have questions. But were there any questions for Mr. Kachuba?
Oh, I apologize. Any questions to Mr. Kachuba?
The only question I have, Ted, the stone parking pad, that's 50 percent coverage of, like those, the pavers, or is that still 100%?
Stone driveway.
Okay, it used to be 100, didn't it?
Yeah, it did.
But it changed? Okay, I just, it was on the plan, I just want to make sure that that was right.
And that's calculated into lot coverage?
That is calculated into the lot coverage.
You can, we actually identified as a proposed lot covered table with the 50 percent.
Just, this might not be for you, Mr. Peterson, and I'm sorry, just thoughts on using the existing foundation on the, the rear of this building that's going to get the second lot?
Yeah, we've already looked at that, the existing foundation should be fine to the new. We may have a few point loads that come down that might require some interior repairs, but beyond that, no, we're not, we're not tearing off the back and rebuilding it or anything like that.
And then, Mr. Kachuba, this might not be for you, also, but maybe for the attorney. Can you give us a brief overview of the rental history on this property? Not necessarily, it's 1942, but maybe you were divorced the last five years. We don't have that information. I believe the clients bought the property a couple of years ago, and again, they've used it exclusively for their family in the front, and their rear structure has been, has been rented to an unrelated party. And that's the immediate past feature.
And for my reference, the rear one end, one unit?
It's one unit, certainly.
Yes. It's been rented on the first floor and the front, so it's like, nobody's on the second.
So the family uses the second floor in, in the, in the?
The only reason I ask that question is the design layout of this, and this is an assumption by me. by me, and it's neither here nor there, but I'm assuming that the, the family's probably gonna want to try the second story as well. Could be adequate.
That would be the, the likely intent, yes.
No other questions at this time?
Mr. Dietz?
No questions.
Mr. Derr?
No questions.
Mr. Lubin?
Nothing.
Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, I'm sorry. For public.
Any questions in the public for Mr. Chuba?
There's a shed there.
You know what, just state your name, please.
Rob Forte, uh, neighbor.
An address?
Uh, one on four eight.
All right, good evening. We're just gonna square you in. Good evening and welcome. Do you swear to the information? And testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you're providing, will be the truth, the best you know, so help you God.
Okay. Is the question answered, period, or is this just comments?
You can ask questions right now of this witness, and there'll be comments in a little bit.
Great. There's a shed on the property on your, uh, your plan. Is that coming out?
Yes, the shed in the rear being removed.
What is the distance between, I, I own property just west of here. So what is the distance between, you have a, a site plan, a survey. What is the distance between that shed and my fence?
Two point four six feet.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, yes.
Yep.
Bring that up later.
Uh, so that is non-compliant currently, that shed, and we are removing it.
That's right.
Any other questions in the public? Okay, Mr.. We're gonna move on to the board comments. Start with Mr. Ross.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can do whatever order. So, Mr. Akins, you've rested, so to speak. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, we can do, have, move on sometime. We take the public comments first before board comments, but it's up to your preferences.
Anybody in the public have a comment regarding this application?
All right, good evening, and you're still under oath.
Okay. Rob Forte, open for your case. Okay, a couple of things. I'm glad this, I'm for this application to be approved. He's a neighbor, um, he's explained to me what he wants to do. He's not going outside the footprint. Everything he's been doing is beneficial to the neighborhood, to the community development. Um, the, the pervious coverage is decreased with the shed being removed. There's also, like, like you said before, the, uh, the distance, the clear, the side setback is two point four, which, uh, the code should be three, three foot, which is not on the label. All, all old prudence are with the original footprint, so it's not going outside of the original footprint. It also complies with two couple of sections with the master plan. Section nine, promote the desired environment, which I think this improvement is due. Number eleven, encourages the preservation and restoration of historical buildings. And like this, this gentleman says buildings from nineteen twenty-two. So everything is improved. I know this building, this site is, allows three wealthy families in this, it's very fortunate. But this gentleman and his family, I don't know if he has a large family, and while not literally, it's gonna be changed, but figuratively, it's gonna be just what everybody else has on the block, which is, it's gonna be owner occupied. His family's gonna occupy the whole front section. And the back section, like I have, if everybody else on the block has, will be rented out. But essentially, what we're trying to do is get away from all the rentals in Delaware, and he's going in that direction. So, um, I've looked at the pluses and the downsides. We have to give a downside. I don't really see any big downsides here. That, to me, is. So I'm for the application, and I hope you see that. You're for the application. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else in the public?
Steven Rubin, S.E.B.E.M., R.U.B.I.N.
All right, good evening and welcome. And your address?
One ten Eighth Avenue.
All right, you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you're providing, will be the truth, the best you know, so help you God.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to say, I've been here since two thousand and five. I'm a house just east of, uh, the applicants. And, um, they're one of the last house, I, I'm not gonna talk about the technical aspects because I'm not able to do that. So, uh, just a, a, a logical explanation, I think that the applicants, uh, are, I guess, being looked at as, uh, uh, one of the last people on that, on that block from, uh, from Ocean to A to actually make any changes to their house. All the other houses have pretty much been, uh, been renovated. Ted has been in, uh, all these houses. And I'm just, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, you're being able to approve this for him. He's got a, a large family that would like to take advantage of, uh, what we, we already have. And, um, it's really, unless you have some questions.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else in the public? Okay, we're gonna close the public portion. I will go to board comments.
Perfect.
Mr. Ross?
Uh, I mean, originally, when I saw the application, I mean, obviously, uh, one benefit would be if we were releasing the use of it, but, um, you know, I don't think that you're, you can expect that, especially this day and age, to, to expect everything to become a single-family home, especially when the use was existing. One thing that makes it a lot more powerful for me, though, after reviewing this, is every single variance that currently exists, I believe, is going down, and it's becoming an improvement. And that drawing is much more study-able, I think, than what is at hand. Based on that and the public comments, would you be in favor of that, of the application?
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Craig?
Uh, it looks like a good application to me in every respect, and I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Mr. Veda?
Thoughtfulness on this by all parties involved, I'd have to say. It's, it's nice to see a project come to fruition where, as this gentleman stated, you're, you're saving an historical building in the community. I understand the relevance of having rentals and, uh, sometimes the public and even ourselves frown upon that. However, um, this stays within the existing footprint, and there's no real expansion of that. The only thing I'd like to note personally myself is that we're not showing a walkway to get to the staircase for the second floor unit, which would increase lot coverage ever so slightly. If I miss that, let me know. But otherwise, I think there's a lot of thought into this, and it's a pretty case for you to talk.
Thank you. Mr. Dietz?
Well, I'd just like to concur with what other board members. It's always nice when you have neighbors that are coming and supporting the application. I think it's great when, um, new owners or prospective owners come and, and talk to the neighbors and, and find out, um, what's going on there. It makes for good neighbors, and it really just improves the quality of life for everyone. I really appreciate the design as well. I think, um, taking back where you can and giving a little bit of those variances back is, is something that we really appreciate. Maggie, in favor of the application?
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil? I'm sorry. Mr. Derr?
A very thorough job by, by everyone concerned, architecture, architect, engineer. And, you know, you hit a home run. You, you made it less variant friendly, so to speak. You, you went backwards, which is, which is great. And, uh, I live up the street a block, and I passed by that house, and, uh, it looks like definitely an improvement for the neighborhood, and I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Mr. Lubin?
Pretty much the same. Going in and reading to family in the front, but hearing the proposed use of that space turned me, uh, the, the reduction of the variances helps, so I would be in favor.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
Uh, no comments.
Okay, I, I myself agree with the board. I think it's a great design. I think it's gonna make a benefit to the community there, to the neighbors. The house is gonna look nice, I think, reducing a lot of the.
Comforts, yeah.
Coverage things and what's in the variances back a little bit, even though they're still over, was really thought out and planned nicely. I would be in favor of the application.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, if the, uh, if I may, the, uh, if the application is going to be approved, I think we took some notes as to some potential, uh, conditions of approval, which would be obviously, uh, compliance with the promises, commitments, and representations a team made tonight, uh, that felt a team made tonight, compliance with any affordable housing rules, regulations, contributions, and directives, obtaining any necessary outside approvals. And we always say that if the, uh, uh, application materially changes as a result of the outside approvals, you'd have to come back to the board for further amended release, uh, relief. I think it'd be evident that, uh, that we take to say that the driveways, the pervious were fifty percent pavers, is that how I say that? And, um, Ted, I saw on one thing on the plans that they were gonna put an outside shower. Is there something that we have to say that you have to connect or do something when it's an outside shower, or am I making that up?
They'll be done accordingly.
Okay, so that's it, okay. And then, let's see what else came up tonight. We had, um, nothing, uh, no disturbance to the back house. And, let's see. Compliance with that half-story, chop to your point, it's not a three-story, it's a two-and-a-half-story structure. Compliance with all the building construction code regulations, compliance with the height. And let's see. Compliance with the fire rating requirements. And, uh, I guess for the testimony, it's a rough basement, not a finished basement. And, uh, Mark, do you know, just for, when I do the resolution, uh, in terms of occupancy, are all three units currently occupied now?
I believe that, uh, shoot, the, the back one is occupied and the upstairs of the front ones. Should be the first floor.
First, uh, so the, the downstairs is occupied, but the upstairs is not?
No.
It is.
What, what is it?
Okay, so they're all occupied right now?
I think it's probably gotta be said, they're, they're all used. I think that's a fair way to say it, Mr. Kennedy.
And then, we're gonna have the, um, removal of the non-conforming shed, I think.
Yeah. We stipulated that.
And, um, and then just, uh, you'll verify, uh, per Mr. Amaya's point, you'll verify the, well, it sounds like you have verified the structural integrity, load capacity. And.
Flood zone.
Compliance with flood zone regulations.
CDX zone. For the ones.
And, let's see. Now, Mr. Amaya, you had said something about, um, about no walkway to the upstairs units?
That's, that's a discretion of the board. I mean, it's pretty evident that the board is gonna occupy that ground, he's not gonna be walking on grass every night to get in and out of the.
Okay.
Second floor.
So are you proposing any type of condition?
I'm proposing that whatever walkway gets, is going to be used, should be noted in their lot coverage, yes.
Okay. Mr. Akins, what, what do you think about that?
We would provide supplemental plan to convert that to, uh, to board's estimate.
Okay. And now, just so I know, uh, do I need to, uh, change the lot covered variance that you're going to be applying for?
That would increase the lot cover, yes.
By roughly how much? That's quick math. And while, while you're thinking about that, we're also gonna, we have our other standard conditions. We have a twenty-four-month, uh, shelf life on the approvals by which the building permits have to be obtained for any agreed-upon extension. And we usually say, uh, rating and drainage details shall be reviewed and approved by, uh, the borough engineer. And, uh, I think that's, that's it. So, Mark, I don't.
I'm calculating.
Right, if I am, I'm, uh, I'm gonna speak slowly. While the, uh, those calculations are being, uh, brought up, are you okay with those conditions?
I am okay with those conditions. The applicant stipulates and confirms the conditions as, as forthof Mr. Kennedy on record.
And then, the, it would increase it approximately a hundred and twenty square feet for a three-foot walkway. And the total, uh, lot coverage, if you use a pervious paver, uh, would be, um, under, be an increase of point eight percent, increasing it to fifty-seven point six percent.
Okay, put the board on?
Yes.
Okay, so we can, um, uh, if the pleasure of the board is to approve it, we could approve the application subject to those conditions.
Motion. I'll make a motion to approve this application.
Second.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Mr. Langen?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Diario?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
Yes.
Thanks very much, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to make a presentation. Thank you very much. Big word, you're winning. Good job, guys.
Thank you. Hopefully we're fast enough for the floor. No speeding.
Uh, we need to graduate. Yeah. Yeah, I'm calling.
Joe, for sure, yeah. Haven't actually met Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah. Called it by phone.
Exactly, exactly.
I use any words. I like that thing, and the dormer's smart. That's good.
You got one? Thanks, everybody.
Okay, I saw you were all in the same class. You looked.
I was a little thinner. So you were all. Scary.
What'd that say, ready?
Oh, yes.
Next application. Now, I motion, have you?
Okay. Sorry. As the, um, time, uh, the same round of four, ready? All right, so we're going to, uh, this was carried from, uh, prior meetings, so notice and jurisdiction have already been accepted. So what we'll do is we will mark into the record what we as a board have before us. A-one is the application, uh, package, and that's dated April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. And then, A-two will be the application checklist. And A-three will be the minor land use application denial form dated March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. And A-four is a communication from, uh, Robert H. Morris Land Surveying, uh, reference to the height of the roof while the United data January seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. A-five is the minor land use settlement permit form, and that's dated March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Last, but not least, it's A-six is the survey of property prepared by Morgan Engineering, and that's dated January twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen. And then, I think this is also a, well, it's, it's actually the floor plans and elevations, including a survey of the property. And the floor plans and elevations are prepared by, um, Paul Emmerich, Manocheenko, and dated April twenty, two thousand and twenty-three. I think I said April, right? Okay, and what we'll do is for the second time tonight, but not the final time tonight, we're gonna square in Ted. Ted, beyond the, you are the zoning officer, the construction official of the great borough of Oklahoma. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you're providing, will be the truth, the best you know, so help you God? Okay, thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, this is Kevin Assadi, the applicant's attorney. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Chairman, ladies and the board. Kevin Assadi is at your pukes. On behalf of the applicant. Um, so as you heard, we're here on seven-nine Ocean Avenue. This, uh, property has a, currently has a existing three-story house. The proposal is to enlarge the third story, provide elevator service, uh, for the home, and to, um, remove an existing shed and construct a three-car garage, um, that will increase the total of off-street parking spaces on the lot from three spaces to four, and, um, also preserve store. from three spaces to four, and also preserve storage for beach stuff and, you know, maintenance equipment and that sort of thing. Going to, this is seeming, one is the property owner who seems to be right, Sheru McCarry, and our architect, Paul Amalchenko. So without further ado, I think we can swear in, this is McCarry.
All right, if you could just state your name, please?
Sheru McCarry.
And how you spell your first name? Okay, and last name?
M-A-C-E-N-O.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Belmar zoning board. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, as to help you die?
I do.
Thank you. And Paul, you can say your name and business address?
Paul G. Amalchenko, offices at 917 Main Street, Belmar.
All right, and you could raise your right hand. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, as to help you die?
I do.
And for record keeping purposes, you are testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed and certified, confidential, up-to-date architect, correct?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sheru, can you tell the board where you currently reside?
709 Ocean Avenue, Belmar.
As subject property, correct? And you live there year-round?
Yes, we do.
Tell me about your family.
Well, my, my husband and I have three kids and two grandkids. Belmar has a very sweet spot for us in our hearts. We, even though we only moved here for a time last year, in 2022, we actually met in Belmar in 1986. My husband and I, right in front of McDonald's on the beach. So it's really, you know, great that how we like coming back and, you know, back to the spot where we met. In that time, we always come to visit Belmar. First, there's just a couple of them with their kids, and we were on the beach. And, you know, we always dreamed of making Belmar a full-time residence. We moved from North Jersey to Mondo. We were there for 30 years. So although it was a tough decision to make to move, but knowing that we were gonna be in Belmar and spending time with, you know, our family, we made it to Belmar, you know. The reason we are hoping to save the tradition is, you know, as our family gets bigger, we just like more space, you know, when they come visit. We have two grandkids, and we're hoping our family continues to grow. We have our children also, even though they are, don't live with us, but we do have one of our sons. He's coming back to Fortune, California. He stays with us for quite some time. Also, we have elderly parents that come to visit a lot. And my mother-in-law, she's 83, and just recently she had a pre-bet fall. And we're planning to have him live in with us in the next couple of months. And, you know, having the elevator would really help her go up and down because it is a immersed living. So our bedrooms are on the first floor, and the main living space on the second floor. So the elevator would definitely help. My father also comes a lot. He's 87, and he struggles going up and down the stairs. So having an elevator there would help him. And unfortunately, I have bad back issues. I had back surgery two years ago. So going up and down the stairs has been quite a challenge for me. And, you know, having the elevator would definitely improve the quality of all of our lives. You know, but the garage is also would help with the parking situation between our cars, our kids' cars, our family's cars when they come visit. It's good to have that extra space so that we, you know, don't take up parking on the Ocean Avenue or on the side street, leaving that open floor, you know, people that are coming to visit, which, you know, it's another thing to do, to like to have that extra garage space. And, you know, we're just really happy to be here. And I'm glad to see all of my neighbors here on board. So I hope to get to see all of you on board going on the beach and just enjoying our time there.
And I'm sure most of the board is familiar with this spot. Can you remind the board what is immediately to the south of your property?
Yeah, it's the Monmouth County, it belongs to the Monmouth County. It's the pumping station. So, you know, it's quiet, they don't bother us. They don't bother them. And then next to that is a 7-Eleven, which, you know, again, that they don't bother us. They don't bother them.
Of course, 8th Avenue comes in between?
Yeah, it's 8th Avenue in between. You know, the neighbors are great, and we have, you know, we started to meet a few of them, and really nice people. And it's really nice to see all the improvements going on around us. You know, we take our walks, there's always changes, and there are always good changes. And it makes us feel good that, you know, it's improving, and everybody's really taking better properties.
I'll leave anything further for Sheru.
Any questions? Chuck?
No.
Mr. Greg? Dietz?
No questions.
Diario? Now, Louv? Mr. O'Neil?
No.
No.
Is there any questions from the public? No questions? Okay, we can move on.
That's Mr. Amalchenko.
Yes.
And Mr. Amalchenko, can you enlighten the board as to your licenses and education and experience?
Colonel. I've been licensed since 1976 in the state of New Jersey. I'm also licensed in Florida, and I have a national certification through NCRB for the past 15 years.
And have you testified before planning and zoning boards in the state of New Jersey before?
I have, question this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to offer Mr. Amalchenko his thanks for with us.
We're good.
Thank you. Mr. Amalchenko, did you design in addition to the home and a detached garage for a 709 Ocean Avenue?
I did.
And can you please take the board through the existing conditions and then your proposal?
Yes, of course. Existing home is a three-story home. It has, currently it has a, an open deck on the third floor with a lounge area. And the goal for the McCarries basically is to create their master bedroom space by adding an additional 470 square feet to what is already there, which is 290 square feet currently of a closed space. We're also proposing a third-floor observation deck, if you will. We're also going to present the board that we're successful with this application, storage units for any kind of umbrellas or lawn chairs, things like that on the, on the rooftop level. The other, we are, our building coverage basically is 40%, where 25% is required.
Can I interject and ask you about that? Is, is the footprint of the principle of the dwelling changing in any way?
Not at all.
Okay, so the, the increased building coverage is attributable to the garage, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, go on, please.
Yeah. Also, we did not investigate the concept of utilizing pervious pavers. We have the gravel driveway. Currently, we don't have any runoff problems whatsoever. There's no ponding history on the property whatsoever, and that the McCarries are comfortable with maintaining that shore-area gravel type of character. The lot coverage is 39.5%, where 25% is required. The elevator, the proposed elevator would be in this configuration to the north side. We are proposing some cosmetic changes to the exterior right now. You're probably all familiar, the building's relatively flat in terms of the facade. We wanted to add a little bit of character here with a, with a projection of a balcony that projected about four and a half feet off the front. And it would consist of about 12 feet of that projection over an existing porch area that they have. We're also going to modify the siding with some wood grain features and, and then with the, with the white character as a balance to the elevation and to give it some, some interest that it currently needs. Sheet C3 basically describes the balance of the elevations, the balance of the views as the north view. This would show the configuration of that projection of the balcony. But we, the south view depicts a circular staircase for the rooftop deck. It also shows the projection of that balcony once again. And then the rear view, which is the west view, shows the existing character of the home, which is not changing other than the third floor. The unusual part of this application is that ordinarily, we have a second floor where we have a certain percentage that we can add of the second floor space. This particular second floor, pardon me, is only 948 square feet, where with our, with our addition, we'd be at 77% total of the, of the second floor space. However, the third floor, the third floor is 1,356 square feet, which would bring us down to, if we could utilize the, the first floor configuration with the 1,356 square feet, we would be at 54% of the, of that particular floor. And once again, we're not proposing any additions to the footprint of the existing home. And then in addition.
Just the elevator? Pardon me? Just the elevator, correct?
I said the elevator, absolutely, yes.
I'm sorry, say it again, it was no addition to the? Except, except the elevator. To the third floor? No, no. They took the bomb out.
Yeah, it's six foot by four foot ten for the projection. And then we're proposing the two-car garage, which is basically reflecting the design of the existing house. It's 18 foot high. It would house two cars, and it would provide a loft space for storage on the, on the second level of the garage.
Is the proposed garage conforming in terms of dimension and height?
Yes. Basically, that's our, that's our presentation, we're creating a master suite on the, on the third floor in addition to the existing lounge area, and incorporating that into, into more livability for the McCarries.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask you a few specific questions about, about how this relates to zoning principles. Can you tell us how this application is encouraging appropriate development? I'll be, I'll be more specific. How does the, how does the proposed elevator promote the general welfare?
Oh, well, I mean, I think that's obvious from Sheru's testimony in terms of livability within the family unit. Certainly, there are some disabilities that need to be accommodated. And it's not unlike some of the other properties that are in Belmar now. Regarding the, regarding the third floor, from 15th Avenue up to 10th Avenue, basically, most of the homes along there have a full third floor existing. And I know Ted explained to me that that was approved in a prior application in a bulk area. But there are considerable number of homes that have that existing space. And we believe that we would be in conformance with, with those homes. And in keeping with, and in keeping with that, we wouldn't be obstructing anyone's view whatsoever, their quality of life right there, or anything like that.
And how is the information that we heard from Sheru concerning the Monmouth County lot and the way the lot is situated in relation to 8th Avenue and the 7-Eleven? How does that sort of maintain open light and space?
Well, there's literally no impact from the buildings, to our view or our, our destruction in terms of their, their view or their usability of that property. The neighbor to the, the neighbor to the north would not, would not have their view obstructed whatsoever by that balcony projection that I've indicated here.
And can you show, just point with your finger where the existing, you know, part of the existing third story is? Is that to the south currently, or is that currently to the north?
It's to the south. It would be in this configuration, and it had it.
Did you mean to the north? Where the existing third story is? Is that closer to 8th Avenue, or is that closer to the neighbor?
It's currently in this configuration here to the south. That's the 290 square feet together with the depth. And then this is our, our elevator addition and the proposal for the expansion of the, of that third, third level.
Okay. And your prior testimony speaks for itself about how the proposed improvements would promote a desirable visual environment. And you testified to that. And, and we've also heard testimony about how the addition of an additional off-street parking space could also promote the general welfare in that respect.
Correct.
Are there any detriments associated with the variances that are being requested?
Not that we can determine the garage proposal is 18 foot high. It's not going to obstruct anyone's view, any light in there, any emergency access, or anything like that.
Is there any drainage issue that you can identify that would result from, from this application?
We've never experienced any. Basically, the gutters for the existing house are runoff to the side yards, and there's no ponding created, no runoff to the neighbors in that area. With the garage, with respect to the garage, the gutters would be drained into that gravel area, which has 100% percolation.
And for, just for my application, the gravel area, is that counted as impervious coverage?
Yes.
And even though it's counted as impervious coverage, how does the water do with the gravel? So when it rains, does the water tend to river off of the gravel, or does it go straight?
Not at all, not at all. It basically seeps into the soil.
Can you give, give us the exact height from the floor of the loft to the ceiling of the loft?
That's good. If, if.
It's a garage. So it would be, it would be, rather than, yes? It's about seven feet.
Get that guy.
Yes, thank you. So it, it comes to my attention that it seems that the lot coverage variance that we're proposing, 40%, it's actually much less than that when taken into consideration that the stone on the driveway is not 100% impervious, but it's only 50%. And so that being said, although our applications for 40% lot coverage variance, you rest assured that it's actually considerably less than that. But we'll, rather than trying to do math, our applications for 40% lot coverage, but it is as we detect. The mathematics might actually be that we're about, you know, in the 30% type somewhere, but.
That's quite a large area back there.
Yeah, it is, it is a large area back there. And we didn't take 40% credit for it. We, we counted 100%.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions for Mr. Amalchenko, so I'll open them up to the board.
Is there any public yet? Let's go to the public. Anyone from the public have questions for the architect? Okay, but that's it. We'll go to the board members. Mr. Ross?
Sure. I think that fifty percent being still Brian on that, right? That's pretty good, so it's gone into effect, right?
Yeah.
No, there's two different ordinances.
Oh, the different one I'm picking up? What's the one I'm picking up?
It's known on the property in other areas.
In other areas.
All right, good.
Just plant flowers in the driveway.
So the only question I had was related to the driveway. I walked by there a little while ago and it's, you really don't have a traditional apron near driveway. It's almost like a little...
It is a bit...
A little dim. And it says no parking in front of it.
Oh, I just put that sign there because...
Yeah, I can see why.
Well, because over the summertime and the DPW went and put the no parking, people would park in front of our driveway and block us in.
Yeah.
And it was like very frustrating. So I called the DPW and they were nice enough to come and paint no parking there.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, that doesn't look like a traditional twelve-foot apron. Do you share that driveway with the neighbor? Is there a shared driveway arrangement there? Because it just looked like a very small room.
It's kind of like a flat lot. So we have, our driveway starts to meet that and then it goes all the way straight. And then the Monmouth County owns part of, like, the back of the property.
Yeah.
It looks like it's part of our driveway that's actually there.
Okay, so it's a conforming driveway. Yeah, I saw cars in there and parking there, so...
And the reason the driveway kind of comes in at that odd angle is obviously to preserve that additional off-street parking space, which are huge as you reach out to that.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody pulled up outside that line, it's gonna be real tough to get in there. The other question I had for the architect on the drawing of the garage, you have two cars drawn in there. Is that, do those house two spots? Because the opening looks like it's sixteen feet. What's the width of the parking spot? Five?
Nine.
Nine, right.
It was eighteen.
So the door to get in there is sixteen wide, so that wouldn't, I don't know if that counts as being one at one spot.
Yes. We use that typically for a two-car garage, sixteen-foot wide opening. Car is about six feet wide.
Okay, but I think for the purpose, why I'm asking is, would you need a parking variance if you can only technically count the garage for one spot? Are you, because it's hard to tell the configuration of the driveway. Can you fit, I think you can three cars for this property. Do you have three spots in the driveway with the garage?
Oh, we legitimately, I mean, this is typical in the industry that where sixteen-foot wide opening will provide access to two cars in the garage. But even if that were not the case, we have plenty of parking on the side of that bulkhead, if you will, on the east side of the driveway.
Okay. You were saying that as long as you go in and you move to the right a foot, move to the left a foot, you can fit two legalizing...
That's correct.
Or in the garage.
Yeah, that's correct.
I'm just trying to figure out how that works. All right, so to answer my question, yes, you don't need a parking variance or no, you do?
No, we don't.
Okay, no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Craig, sir. Again, on that parking, do you know the measurement between the Monmouth County property and the base of the garage where the doors are? The south side of the garage?
The dimension that you were requesting, what?
From the base where the garage doors are, the south side of the garage to the property line at the north of the Monmouth County property to the south of your property.
Twenty-eight feet.
I guess that's enough to call it in and out. You gotta do a K chart in there? Okay. The eighteen-foot-high garage is eighteen foot, no, that, okay. And fifty percent. You know, on that driveway, we're counting, you're counting that as a hundred percent impervious, correct?
I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think we should do the math now before we approve it? Because at that point, if we approve it with a hundred percent impervious, you could come back and pave it with blacktop and it would still be approved in a sense.
Would you be able to, well, we can either do that math now, but we may not be able to, but if we could get that calculation over to between now and next meeting, if you'd like.
Yeah, we will agree that it's going to be a stone driveway and nothing else but a stone driveway. And if you will get that calculation corrected so that before it actually has the resolution read, we'll know the real impervious coverage.
Makes a lot of sense. And maybe you can do some, if we want to math now, and give us a not-to-exceed figure roughly, but you can, while we're finishing, just like the last question.
We'll finish the questions and then...
Yeah.
Really? That's all the questions I've got. Thank you, Mr. Craig. Mr. O'Neal?
Yeah, just to jump on what he said, when you're doing that calculation, I'm to assume the, we'll call it the rear, the north set, there's the area behind the northern side of the garage would be stone also, just...
I'm sorry, say it again, the area?
North of the garage would also be calculated as stone. And like everything's at east is all stone.
Right.
And then just, I guess this is a question for the architect. Any considerations, or maybe I'm not seeing this, why not switch the orientation of the garage? Because you can't get in now, is that why?
I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't understand your full question.
No, no, I can't, why people...
Because then you can't get too much.
Exactly.
This is sixteen foot wide.
Yeah, but they, this is, the garage is not existing, correct?
Correct.
So you could put the garage, it's only going to be setback requirements. Right now, you're showing, am I reading this correctly, three feet off the property line?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Right, so you're gonna make additional fire codes and stuff there, is that what?
Well, you have to read the side of the garage.
Or, pardon me?
Just have to read the side of the garage. Anything within five feet has to be...
Does everyone insist that the garage has to be X, Y, Z distance from the building, from the rear of the building?
From the upper structure?
Yes. I, to simplify it, would the architect or the owners give consideration to switching the orientation of the garage? Why can't you put it up there, garage here, is what I'm saying?
That's routine, that line is a four-foot high, eighteen inch long.
I don't think, retaining wall is not shown on that plan.
It's noted, but it's... There is a note that asks you to draw...
Moving forward, balcony's epoxy, what are they, new balcony, old balcony, or here the master suite?
Yes.
It's epoxy, so that's counting towards the coverage, it's not open slot decking.
It actually, it actually configures over an existing, over an existing porch here that's covered, so it would be up in this corner. The coverage, by the way, is reduced by nineteen, by nineteen percent.
Nineteen percent, which brings it down to... Do you conform to that?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, it would be twenty percent, twenty and a half.
Because that means the existing coverage was way lower than what we saw.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Craig. Mr. Craig, I was looking at some other stuff and I just had this question. The elevator only takes you to what you're calling the third story?
Yes.
And not up to the roof deck?
No.
And so anybody who wants to get on the roof deck has to use stairs there?
That's right.
And you're gonna have some kind of storage on a roof deck? Could you describe that better? Is it gonna be, you know, some kind of boxes up there, some built up there?
It's something that we would be willing to present to the building department in accordance with our application too for their review. Basically, we're anticipating something that would be about two and a half, three feet high, would open from the top and be locked down.
Okay, so it's not something that's gonna change the height of the building?
No, no, sir. You won't see it from the street either.
No, without an airplane. Okay. Ms. Thietz?
Just a question, you answered the, for the garage, it's seven-foot ceilings for the loft space.
Yes, right.
There's no heat or air or anything for the, proposed for the garage?
No.
Okay. Thank you, that was my own question.
Thank you, Mrs. Dario.
Okay, on the rooftop deck, what is the surface of the deck gonna be?
It would, it would be a membrane material, much the same as we, as we use in commercial structures.
The decking on top of the membrane or...
No, that is, that is the surface, yeah.
And the height of the railing on the rooftop deck?
The height of the railing is three feet, but it's two feet below, it's solid, and then one foot with the airplane wire cable.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Lubin?
I have nothing.
Mr. O'Neil?
I have nothing.
Public, again?
Sure.
Anybody from the public have a question for the architect? Or comments, I guess you should... Comments?
About the application?
Yeah, it's our neighbor.
Okay, if you could just state your name, please?
Maged, M-A-G-E-D.
M-A-G?
E-D.
E-D.
Last name, Abashi, H-A-B-A-S-H-Y.
And your address?
Seven oh four Ocean Avenue.
Okay.
On the next door.
Well, welcome, I just, where you went, welcome, and thank you for staying. You squared the information and testimony you're about to provide to be the truth, best you not to tell, you got it. Thank you.
I'm just coming to say that I don't have any problem with that initial, and I wish good luck with that, that's it.
Thank you. Okay.
Captain Asadi, you're resting?
Resting.
Okay. So we can have more comments?
Okay, more comments will start again with Mr. Ross.
Yeah, I think it looks really nice. And again, we have another application that's actually aligned on our variances. I think the third floor, although you have a third floor now, much taller, this one looks very good and is in line with everything else that's nearby. I'm really excited for the application.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Craig, similar comments on your favor of the application. Mr. O'Neal?
Tastefully done, it's a unique building, I'm familiar with the building. That's my personal beach there, so I see it all the time. It's a unique, it's a unique lot in itself. I don't know if it's feasible or not, maybe personal preference, doesn't matter if you're there. I would give consideration to switch the orientation on the garage if that...
Thank you. Ms. Thietz?
I'd be in favor of the application.
Mr. Dario?
I agree, it's untastefully, I live just up the street on Eighth Avenue, walk by it all the time. Yes, it is a unique building, a glass building.
Mr. Lubin?
I'm in favor. It does, it fills it out because it is unique with the way that cut on the third floor is now. So by doing that little bit on the balcony and using that wide band, just two feet of your three feet on the balcony upstairs, it looks good.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil?
Nothing looks good. I worry always about three-foot railings on the third stories. You'd be on six-foot four. It's easy to slip over, but it is what it is.
Thank you.
Actually, if keeping with that, may I ask Ted, would an extra six-inch higher belt, airplane wire affect us in any way in terms of height?
Not for railing, no. It goes by the bottom, the roof, so I'm there.
Problem solved.
Yeah, I got a question. Is this gonna turn this to five-day construction?
Yes. Yes. Two-hour separation.
Yeah, it's gonna have to double sheet rock, all the ceiling and the whole structure.
Got it. Yeah, we discussed it.
And what, that's Ted, that's double sheet rock for what?
For that's five-day construction, it's sort of, there's a whole series of rules to that.
Ted, I wasn't gonna go there, Ross, I'm letting touch on that, just for word clarification, specifically made, it's either, to comply with that, it's double sheet rock, five days, we work on sprinkler?
Yeah, it's either or.
It's either or.
Okay, last comment. Tastefully designed, I think it's a great application for the house to square it off, take that cuts out, and I would be in favor of the application. Anybody from the public here?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I took some notes as to some potential conditions if the board were inclined to approve it. Standard conditions would be compliance with all the promises, commitments, and representations that the team, the development team made tonight during this public hearing process, complying with all applicable housing rules, regulations, contributions, obtaining any necessary outside approvals with the caveat that the application materially changes as a result of those outside approvals, they need to come back for further amended relief, twenty-four-month timeframe or shelf life for the approval within which to get the building permit, grading and range details, if required or requested, to be reviewed and approved by the borough engineer. And then we had a couple of, now, I guess the garage is not gonna be used as living space, correct?
No.
Okay, and then I know Ms. Thietz was asking about the utilities. Are there no utilities in the garage?
No.
Okay.
Is there going to be electrical?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so none except electrical. And there's no height variance, and we're gonna say that the floor of the loft, the ceiling of loft is seven feet, and let's see, so now we're saying basically the elimination of the lot covered variance, correct?
Yes.
Although we want to verify that, Kevin, the calculations once, is that the piece to make them reliable, but we'll verify the exact figure. We noticed for variance in every step, we understand it's rocks, it's not going to be paved, and we'll be the exact, we'll verify the exact number of what it must mean.
All right, and we're gonna say the area north of the garage is also remaining as stone. And now, is it, now there's some discussion, are we not changing the orientation of the garage?
No.
And then...
And then getting with the radius, turning radiuses or...
We're gonna have the retaining wall details put on the plans, no lot covered variance, so that's what we just said. And then, I guess, the Ted, at the last minute, we were just talking about, well, the, let's see...
It's a construction question.
Okay, and we're just, the storage area is not gonna be visible on the third, on the top floor, it's not gonna be visible from the street, no heat in the garage. Now, are we talking about the height of the rails complied, on the rooftop deck complied with obviously all prevailing building and construction code requirements? And we're going to, now, are we saying it's gonna be, are we saying there's gonna be adding six inches on the rooftop railings, is that what we said?
Yeah, of a bit.
And also, five-day construction for fully sprinkler is what we said for prevailing building and construction code regulations. And, all right, so Kevin, I'm just a little apprehensive about the building, I'm sorry, on the lot coverage. So do you have a not-to-exceed figure just in case or...
We are, we are totally in conformance at twenty-five percent.
Okay. Got it?
Totally.
Okay.
On that, on that stone coverage, the area north of the garage and west of the garage is considered stone, but that's like stone mulch, and that would be...
Yeah, no, that's lot coverage.
That is lot coverage, is fifty percent?
No, it's a hundred percent. The only time you get a conception is for tribal. If any place else other than...
Wouldn't that be like...
The only other places, if there's a flower there, that doesn't count. But if it's... The only other places, if there's a flower there, that doesn't count, but if it's, if it's on just the ground, any place other than driveway, it's a hundred percent.
So if there are any flowers in those two areas, which is, that's three feet?
Yes.
I mean, then they would get?
Put flowers in there, and then, you know.
Then it'd get a hundred percent.
Yeah, it says it.
So, I don't know how you wanna look at that, but, it's, it would say, if you were tight on your imperious?
Plant flowers.
Put some flowers behind the garage into the west of the garage, and it'll get a little bit.
Hydrangeas.
Have something like shade, the railing, it doesn't go down to the bottom of the deck, so let's just call top of railing forty-two, yeah, forty-two inches.
Top of railing to be forty-two inches.
Got it, there's a partial wall down there.
Got it.
If it was a commercial deck, it would have to be forty-two.
No, I'm saying, he offered, they accepted, right?
All right, so Kevin, you're, are those conditions, you're okay with them?
All those conditions are set up.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, if the board is so inclined, there can be a motion to approve it, somebody's, those can do.
Motion, I'll make that motion, approve it.
Second?
Hey, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Ms. Thiez?
Yes.
Mr. D'Orio?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, thank you very much.
Congratulations. Anybody need to raise your voice for the application? Yes, Kevin, we take it, Kevin, right?
Hello, again, Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. O'Neill?
Here.
Mr. Lino?
Here.
Ms. Thiez?
Here.
Mr. D'Orio?
Here.
Mr. O'Neill?
Here.
Mr. Lubin?
Here. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the O'Toole application, Fourteenth Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just a couple real quick, preliminary procedural things, for the third final, and time tonight, Ed Bianchi, you are the zoning officer and construction official of the Borough of Belmar, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to present, to the extent you provide, that will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide? Okay, and what we'll do is, we already took jurisdiction at last meeting, I think, April, correct? And so we'll mark into the record what we, as a board, already have before us, A one is the development application package dated July ninth, two thousand twenty-three, A two is the minor land use zoning permit, and that is dated June twenty-sixth, I'm sorry, June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, slash June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, is that right?
Twenty-two.
I'm sorry, six point two. All right, so that was A two, and then, A three, so A three is the survey, okay, by the planning group, and that's dated April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, A four is elevations, four plans and elevations, I think they're undated, and then, A five, another set of four plans and elevations, prepared by Ihouse Architects, and that's undated, and then, A six is a plot plan, prepared by the planning group, and that's dated May second, two thousand twenty-three, so, good evening, and why don't you introduce yourselves, and all swear everybody in.
James Albergis, and I'm Mr. Manstri.
And James, your official role tonight is builder?
Yes, builder.
Okay.
Michael Toole, Horn.
Michael?
Yeah.
O'Toole. Okay, and good evening.
Michael Cannon, Cannon, who do you stay, engineer, planner, surveyor.
Engineer, planner, and surveyor, okay, gentlemen, if you could all raise your right hands, do you swear, one more, sorry, and you are?
Paul Lawrence, Ihouse Architecture, sixteen hundred, Highway seventy-one, Belmar, New Jersey.
Okay. If you could all raise your hands, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
I do.
All right, all individuals have been sworn in, and just, Mr. Lawrence, just so I know, are you an architect, or are you just from Ihouse Architects?
I am.
You're an architect, licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
Licenses are current and up to date?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Evening, folks, I love you again, my name is James Albergis, I'm the builder, I'm also the co-architect, the owner, Mrs. O'Toole can't be here tonight, alluded or not, she is a mechanical engineer, which deconditions coal plants around the block, so, Mr. O'Toole's here. So, this particular property, we have a two-bedroom condo in the front, one-bedroom condo in the back, Mr. O'Toole can get into the particulars of it, but just as an overview, since I'm personally with the family, their ninety-nine-year-old mother, sixty-six-year-old disabled brother, lived in the front house, but the daughter lives in the back house, they have subsequently sold their house in Lakeview, New York, to make Belmar their permanent residence, they also have two sisters, and two other generational families that purchased property in Belmar recently, and of the demine large family of all my years, I haven't seen a family try and get together, and effectively commended, at least from my point, as they're taking Belmar, put your feet down, and start over again, so, with that said, I just wanted to give you a little backdrop of the family, of what I know, and what they do, the three children, two are engineers, one's a business major, so it's pretty solid old man, you know, thing, for Belmar, it would be a privilege to have, to do this now, along with other family members, that would be good to do this now.
Okay, thank you, and now, Mr. Chairman, can I just ask you, I have a couple questions, just basic questions, I'll get it out of the way, and I'll have the resolution?
Absolutely.
So, Mr. O'Toole, you're the owner of the property?
Yes.
And how long have you owned it, roughly?
Family owned it about twenty-five years, I just brought, Mark and I bought out, broke my law, about two years.
Okay, and, so there's two dwelling units on the property, correct?
Yeah.
And I guess Ted, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use? Okay, so the front structure and the rear structure?
Yeah.
All right, so just, let's talk about the front structure just right now, how many stories is it right now?
One story with an attic.
One story with attic, and the front structure, do you know, and if you know, we can defer to Mr. Cannon, do you know the height?
I don't.
Okay, we'll come back to that, and how many bedrooms does the front structure have?
Two bedrooms.
And how many bathrooms?
One bed.
And is it currently occupied?
Yeah.
Okay, and, is there a dedicated parking space for that, or is it not dedicated?
Yes, three spots.
Total?
I believe.
Okay, and what about, let's go to the rear structure now, right now, how many stories is that?
One.
One, and Mr. Cannon can maybe give us a height, how many bedrooms in that rear structure?
One bed.
One bedroom, how many bathrooms?
One.
One, and is that occupied?
Yeah, my daughter.
Okay, all right, thank you, that was, I appreciate that, and so now, do you wanna turn it over to Mr. Cannon, or?
Yeah. My credentials are?
Sure, you know, we have some new board, we're fine, real, real briefly, just credit.
Well, I received my engineering and planning license in nineteen ninety, surveying license in nineteen ninety-one, I've been practicing throughout Longmont, Ocean County, throughout the state in those capacities, since that time, I've testified before a number of boards, including this one.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman?
I accept.
Okay.
Okay, so the property is designated as Lot Ten, Lot one forty-three in Belmar, it's also known as Lot nineteen fourteen Avenue, the dimensions are forty feet wide by ninety-nine point one three feet deep, which creates a variance condition, since the area is three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five square feet, where forty thou, four thousand square feet is required for the zone, the site is currently developed, as we were saying, with a one-story frame, single-family structure in the front, the property, a one-story frame, one in the interior, there's a concrete strip driveway on the east side of the house, there's a paper patio in between the, the front structure and the rear structure, and there's also a shed located on the property, the site is served by visual sewer and water, and the existing site has a number of existing variance conditions, and one is for lot area, as I mentioned, that's three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five square feet, or four thousand required, there's a front yard setback for the front building, twenty feet is required, fourteen point six feet is existing, there is a side yard setback for the front dwelling, where five feet is required, and three point eight feet is existing, and there's a side yard setback, and a rear yard setback required for the rear yard, the, sorry, the rear yard setback, where three feet is required, one point two feet is existing, and the side yard setback for the rear building, three feet is required, and two point five feet is existing, as I mentioned, there's also a shed located on the property, the side yard is actually off the property, that's a side yard, and it is, where three feet is required for the rear yard, it's only a twenty point three off the rear property, we have existing condition variances for the lot coverage, and the building coverage, the, where fifty-five percent is required for the allowable for the lot coverage, we are at seventy-six point four percent, and where thirty percent is allowed for the building coverage, we currently have forty point seven percent.
I'm sorry, forty point seven?
Yes.
Got it, yes.
When you were requiring about the heights of the structures, we're not in a variance condition, the height of the rear structure is six foot feet, and the height of the front structure is twenty point two five.
Twenty, twenty-two five, thank you.
The proposed development for the property, we are proposing to construct a second story addition, and attic, on the, on the front building, the rear building will remain the same in place, we are only proposing to adjust the roof to provide some additional storage and attic storage on the rear building, the property's located in the R forty zone, and the single-family dwelling is permitted in that zone, the shed on the property, which is off the property, and requires setback variances, we will be removing that, so we have eliminated those two variances on the, on the property, we've got a new second story addition, we'll be constructing on the front, on the front dwelling, and that will extend over the porch, so, we have an existing front porch on the, on the property, and that has a setback of six point six feet, we will be extending the second floor addition over that front porch, so the, the new front setback will be six point six feet. We are, we plan to reduce lot coverage in the rear yard by removing some of the papers in the area, as much as we can give the patio area in there, but we are planning to remove approximately under fifty square feet of papers to reduce the lot coverage, there are existing two off-street parking spaces on the property, based on the length of driveway that we have, we have approximately fifty-five feet from the property line to the, to the end of the driveway, where there's a fence separating the rear yard, and we require twenty feet in length for a parking space, so we technically only have two parking spaces, existing one of them, as I said, the purpose area on the cycle we reduce, but will still be above the maximum allowable, drainage barriers will remain the same, we don't have any drainage concerns now, so we don't expect any in the future, and the doubt spots for the structure and the various facilities are in the industry. The variances required for the application?
I'm sorry, doubt spots will be directed?
To the street.
Thank you.
The variances required for the application are the existing lot area, where we are undersized, and that generates expansive and large for the use, we will still have these, we will still have the front yard setback, and the side yard setback from the front building, just to give us numbers, the, again, the, so the front yard setback for the front building will be six point six zero feet, the side yard setback will remain at three point eight feet, those are the required variances, the rear dwelling will remain with the rear yard setback at one point two feet, and the side yard setback at two point five feet, the maximum building coverage, where thirty percent is allowed, we will be expanding that from the forty point seven to forty three point two percent, and that is because what we are doing with the, the second story addition is we are, well, actually, with the whole structure, we are squaring off the corners, there is, there are some jogs in the building, and we are going to be squaring those offsets down, right, on the, on the, that's just gonna add to the building coverage, so again, the maximum building coverage will be forty three point two percent, where thirty percent is allowed, and the maximum lot coverage, where fifty-five percent is allowed, and that's the, we're removing under fifty square feet of papers in the rear, so we will reduce that to seventy point three percent.
Seventy point three percent?
Yes, thank you. And we will be expanding the driveway, extending the driveway to the sixty feet that we require around, we've got fence back, additional five feet, so we can have three legal parking spaces in the driveway, at twenty feet. We will also require some additional variances for a plunge pool, so proposing the rear yard?
Sorry, a little pool?
It's a plunge pool, it's essentially just a small pool, it's eight by fourteen feet, we have, we require variances for the side yard setback at five point two feet, and we require a billing setback, where ten feet is required, we propose two point two to the building, to the rear yard. Now, in the, in support of the variances for this, for this project, the lot that is in a sensitive addition, of course, is a hardship for the property, for the, for the lot coverage variance, we are proposing to eliminate some of the proposed papers, we're not gonna get down to the allowable, but we are trying to get back some to, to reduce the lot coverage, as far as the positive criteria, feel this allows the applicants to develop the property without affecting adjacent lots, there's no further encroachments in the, in the side setbacks, although we're, we're squaring off the building, we're not encroaching any further into the side setbacks, so they're not affected, it provides adequate white area and open space, again, since we're not encroaching into the, any more into the side setbacks, it provides efficient space in appropriate locations for the residential use, and we are under the floor area ratio, so it's an allowable density in the property, and again, it promotes a desire for visual, by constructing a second story addition and renovating the site and the aesthetics of the building, the negative criteria, I find us a chance of detriment for the public good, and variances aren't in the subject property, and the application will not impact any adjacent properties by not increasing the side back setbacks, the site will not have any negative drainage impact, since we don't have any drainage impact now, we're not proposing any in the future, with the expansion of the second floor, and the drainage barriers will remain the same, with the doubt spots going to the street, and the lot coverage will be. and the lot coverage will be used. I find no substantial variance in the zone plan, in the zone ordinance, the front dwelling with the rear, the rear building, it is not encumbered in the area. And the rear dwelling will be owner owned, it's not, it's not, it appears against us. Therefore, I find the deviations from the ordinance outstanding as provided by the developer, that's our intention.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask, Mr. Can I just a couple more quick questions, just to round out what I'll need for the resolution?
Absolutely.
Just, and you, Mr. Phil might need to answer all those questions about the existings. Now, if, if you get your approval upon completion, the front structure would be how many stories?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, and what would the height of the front structure be?
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet, and the number of bedrooms?
Three.
And the number of bathrooms?
I'm sorry, it's a four bedroom.
Four bedrooms, and number of bathrooms?
Three and a half.
Three and a half, and then let's go to the rear.
Isn't it five bedrooms?
There's a bunk room in the half-story, so if you count that as a bedroom, it would be five.
Okay, and then the rear structure upon completion would be how many stories?
Three blocks wide.
And the height?
Eighteen feet wide.
And the number of bedrooms?
One, still one.
Still one. I'm sorry?
Still one.
Still one, we're not changing.
Got it, and so bathroom, it's really one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Phil.
Any more questions?
Mr. Lawrence is going to talk about the plan unless we have-
Let me see if the board has any questions in the public panel. Any questions? Mr. Ross, any questions for the planner?
Now, I might, or two.
Okay. Now, the width of the driveway, I don't have a scale to scale the width, and you said you're squaring off the building, is that to the east side, is the building being squared off the driveway side?
Well, there's a jog in the back where there's an existing deck.
Right.
So we've got to square that off. And then, yes, on the east side of the property, there's a jog in the middle of the existing house, and we've got to square that off.
From that side of the house to the property line, you need, I believe, ten feet, because the nine-foot driveway is a parking place right there.
We have a, well, we actually have three point eight feet on the west side, and the, I'm sorry, the total of the side setbacks is fifteen point-
No, no, what I'm asking is from the east side to the property line, do you know that measurement?
It would be eleven point seven.
Oh, okay, yeah, I didn't have the scale to scale this, because you need-
I'm just, I'm looking at-
One foot setback, you need ten foot to make it a nine-foot park. I just want to make sure you had the proper width of parking. You've got, I think you had the length. Did you measure, I don't know where the driveway is-
This is not long enough. You need four cars, you've got eighty feet, it's missing that, you're suddenly going to get the-
He's got a best forty feet.
Yeah, he's going to get two.
So you need a parking variance.
Yeah.
And like with your car, it's a fifty for two cars.
Yeah, two more cars.
Two more, additional. So we can park two cars on the property, we needed two more cars, but we don't have that, so we need a variance for two more.
So four are required and two are proposed.
Yep.
Well, when proposing to extend the driveway, we could get sixty feet of driveway. So that would be the three, well, you're going to short it on special.
Okay, so, I'm sorry. It's outdated.
Can you clarify for me, removing here, I see a hundred and fifty square feet of papers to the building. What is the area that's going to encompass papers? When this project is-
There are papers in the entire rear yard.
Existing?
Yeah.
Which is, I don't know, I'm sorry, yeah.
All done.
Eighty-four, one, six, twenty-three.
That was, is that the survey?
Yes, sir.
Eight three.
So that's eight three, and then eighty-five, two, twenty-three is proposed, correct?
I'm sorry?
The survey plot plan noted five, two, twenty-three is proposed.
Yes, that's correct.
Can you identify for me the areas which are going to encompass papers? Because you're showing removal of a hundred and fifty square feet, that's only a ten foot area.
Well, the existing papers, I mentioned, were from the end, from the back of the front structure to the front of the rear structures. So that's all kind of remained, with the exception of the pool, the pool in there.
So for all intents and purposes, the papers that are there now are coming out, because you have to do an addition on the back, you've got to do an addition on the side, and you have to install the pool. So is it safe to say that the existing papers are there during the construction process and digging for a pool are going to be removed?
They'll be removed for the construction.
So then I personally would like to see what is the plan for the papers to go towards your lot coverage? And then the apron, the, the arc strips are concrete and not impervious papers?
Correct, yeah, they are concrete strips, yes.
So by introducing impervious papers in the rear and impervious papers down the driveway, you would bring down your coverage, is that correct? Is there a basement on the front dwelling?
A basement?
Yes.
Because I believe that was a test.
Is that habitable space or?
No, that's not happening.
And then, so the front dwelling is two bedrooms now, potentially propose a minimum of four, maybe five.
Right.
Is it four or five?
It's four, and there's a bunk, it's called a bunk room, so-
With an office. It's four with an office and an office.
Yes.
So potentially six.
Do you count, is anybody going to sleep on the third floor?
No.
Nobody's going to sleep on the third floor.
I can curve that off.
Thank you. Mr. Dean?
I'm, I'm just a little concerned with the pool here. So it's, it's saying that the pool is going to be, it would say, a two point, how close is the pool from the front structure?
It's going to be about ten, ten point three feet. There's a five-foot deck probably off the front structure.
So it's not-
So it would be five point three feet from the deck.
And how, how, how close is it to the rear structure?
Two point three feet.
Two point three, and how does that work, and Ted can probably answer this, but I, I would assume here that the property would be fenced? It doesn't seem like there's room to have a fence separately around the pool?
Yeah, it has to have, require a pool fence.
And that would be separate than fencing in the entire property, that's a different-
Correct, you can just fence in the pool, you don't have to give the entire apartment. But it's got, the pool has to be ten feet from the structures.
Right, and it's not, it's, it's two point something feet from the back structure? And how would you, how do you fit a fence around that as well?
You're going to have to combine with that. Well, the fence can go into the rear structure, you don't have to go right up there. You can fence the rear yard, that's what we're proposing.
I, I thought I just asked that question, and I was, I thought Ted said that the pool separately had to be fenced.
Well, you can fence in the entire door.
Oh, yeah.
It has, it has to be at least afford for the fence, or you can just fence in the pool.
Got you. So, and more than likely, you would be fencing in that entire back area?
Right.
Because you would have that. And where, where is the pool equipment being proposed?
It will most likely go by the rear structure.
And that would be, and how far does that need to be from your, the property line?
Three feet.
The moss has to be where the whole deck is, right?
So the pool equipment, you say, would be by the rear structure? Ah, yes. And then where would that be, on the wood deck? No, it's not on the wood deck, it comes right up to the edge of the wood deck. So it'd be three feet off the property line? It's five point two feet, it's going to be five point two feet off the property line. Okay.
I think you're referring to the pool equipment, correct Ted?
Yeah.
Yeah, when I'm talking about the pool, where's the pool at?
The pool, yes, will be on the wood deck, in the wood deck area on the, towards the rear, towards the rear of the structure.
Um, yeah, so. I, I mean, I, I have, I guess-
I'd just ask one question to jump on, I'm sorry, just before I forget, sorry for interrupting Ted, you had said that the pool has to be ten feet from the structure?
Correct.
Now, is that a zoning requirement involved, or is that a building in construction?
That's a zoning requirement.
Okay, and they're proposing two point three feet from the rear structure. Okay, so that's a variance, thank you, sorry, that's one slight-
Front structure also.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, it's five point three from the front.
So is that two variances then? Because it's short on the front structure and the back structure.
Yeah, it's got to be ten feet from the structure, I mean, you can, it's two variances combined, but it's got to be true.
So the issue of the pool for envisioning, that's what we're considering.
My only other is really, it's not a question, it's a comment regarding looking at the bedrooms. And, you know, I, I know this property's been in your family a very long time, and what you're proposing, having a bunk room and an office, and you don't foresee anybody living in there, but, but what we're, what we're approving now is going to go way beyond what you're making the changes for in the future. So I, I just wanted, I think that's something that we need to be aware of, that's something that can potentially be seen as six bedrooms, so. I understand what you're saying for your old family and what your uses for it, but I, I just think that's-
Margaret has eight siblings, I have five, so we're just trying to get as much as we can.
I get that, those, that, that would be it.
Thank you, Mr. Dario?
Yes, I have a, not to belabor the parking issue, but on the plot plan, which is proposed, I didn't see a five-foot extension of the driveway. It looks exactly the same as the current. So I-
The driveway is not shown as extended, but it will be extended.
Right, and then there's a comment on the denial that doesn't look like it's in Ted or April's handwriting. It said, "We'll address that meeting and we'll use town right away between property line and sidewalk for parking."
Yeah, we're not doing that.
Oh, okay, that's what I just-
You can't do that.
Yeah, I knew it wasn't your handwriting.
That was my handwriting.
That was your handwriting.
I only wrote that in there because you have to drive over the town right away to get to your driveway. Just as in any application that comes towards its town, obviously, people are parking inside the sidewalk in the right of the line, that's all. It just shows you that there's more room to park.
All right, that's all I had, was the parking issue.
Thank you, Mr. Dario, Mr. Lewin?
Lewin.
Oh, and he's off, okay, Mr. O'Neil, sorry.
We're throwing out our super son. No, I think everybody has, I'm saying concerns, bedroom, driveway, parking, you're cramming a lot of stuff in here.
Mr. Lewin?
Nothing.
Okay, I, I just have one question, did, did you ever consider changing the orientation of the pool?
We can change the orientation of the pool, but we will not need the setbacks that-
I just think it might give you a little more access to where your equipment's going to go, and maybe just fence in the pool without doing the whole property, just a thought.
Good thought, there is existing fencing around the property now, so we really just have to adjust that. But relocating the pool, that was, that was quite a better spot for the equipment, and, but it will not eliminate any building that's set out to the-
I just had one thing, I forgot.
Yes.
The, the current driveway looks like it has a grass strip down. Would that continue when you go the extra five feet?
Yes, yes.
And it's a three, looks like a three foot?
A three foot strip, yes.
Three foot wide, got it.
Okay, we have no further questions?
I've got some questions on some of my comments that I've, do we ever get an average front yard setback here too?
Yes, we did.
And are you complying?
Uh, no, the average front yard setback to these dwellings is fifteen point zero feet. We are at fourteen point six existing and will be six point six, so we still require that.
So you're in the front yard.
Yeah, still in the front yard. And the, and the average front yard setback to the forges is eight point one feet, and we are, again, six point six, so we still require it.
How about the, I'm sorry, eight point one, and you are?
We are at six point six.
Same.
I'm sorry, Ted.
How about the roof pitch? Paul, you're going to address that?
What's the question about the roof pitch?
The roof pitch, a gamble roof, you won't get a seven twelve pitch.
Oh, we do, the, the top pitch is seven, the side pitches are eighteen nine twelve.
It's not part of the plan. This is, all right, what do we have to be able to start?
That's a nice initiative, why don't we introduce that? But it's definitely a-
Yeah, we have all, we have some important-
Any further questions for the planner? Anybody in the public?
The pool, that includes the, any kind of concrete around it, or is that just for the hole in the ground? Because you'd have to include your concrete in the-
Yeah, coking.
Yeah, there's a three-foot coking that goes around it, and that will be, again, the papers that are existing in the backyard now, going to take them up and saw the pool and then move them back, minus the hundred and fifty square feet.
But you're including that apron in your coverage here?
Yes, yeah, we did.
Any further questions for the planner? Okay, we want the next.
Sure, do you have any further witnesses?
Yeah, we're going to have the architect, before he talks, I just wanted to bring something up, that the house to the east of this, on the plot plan, you can see where that porch is, and I know Mr. Hannon did the average setback, but that's pretty typical of this particular street, with a setback to the porches. And also, being in this town as long as I've been, that particular street, especially by the two-hundred-foot list, it's almost all rentals year-round, summer. And of course, this house is going to be probably the nicest house east of B Street, going down forty feet, one quadrant of town that really hasn't been developed yet, so it really is highlighted, this street, and it's big and loaded. Now, we'll go to the other.
I'll try to quicken those guys a little. The existing house, two bedrooms, less than seven hundred and eighty square feet living space. If you're in the kitchen, you're in the living room, you're in the foyer, it's small. We are increasing the size, yes, by mostly, we're only at ninety-nine square feet of footprint to the house. So then we have that southwest corner and those two, two-foot strips on the east side by the driveway. So those three additions are ninety-nine square feet. The bulk of the addition in terms of living space is the second floor, which is going to be coming out over the existing front porch, for a total habitable area of thousand eight. So none of the rooms are overly large, yes, we're going to have five bedrooms, but none of them are exceedingly large, except, I would say, the master bedroom is ours, that is, if, if, if the homeowners, a decent sized, we're ready. But the rest of the house is pretty good, it's all in vinyl siding, with cedar impressions on the front, regular metal siding on the sides, that's all, all long maintenance materials, and it's going to be the new house.
Do you want to present any of your boards, or that's the end of your testimony?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to present any of your boards that you brought?
There's what you have.
All right, please already mark them, thanks.
Okay, we'll go to questions, nobody in the public, who will go to the board questions? This time we'll start with Mr. Ross.
This time we'll start with Mr. O'Neil.
So, you're gonna get air conditioning and stuff like that, where are, is that the location?
Yeah, two AC condensers probably underneath the kitchen window on the, the south side of the house.
And there's none for the back hall?
There's none existing, no.
Okay. That's probably about it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Dariel, no further questions. Mr. Dietz?
I, I don't have any addition from what I stated earlier.
Mr. O'Neil?
Ted's.
Appreciate what you are, are doing here, all right? Just a couple things noted personally myself, um, existing fence, is it PUCO fence?
I'm sorry?
Existing fence, PUCO or non-PUCO?
Uh, the existing fence is, is not PUCO.
Chain link, no bottom rim?
So we will, we will have to replace that.
So the existing fence should be shown on the plans. Pool orientation is not conforming, um, consideration to rotating that, would probably be a better advantage, I think, to, uh, the lot specifically, uh, the areas which the AC condensers are not showing, the pool equipment is not showing, all lot coverage? Right?
Yes.
Um, at that time, if you're gonna be renovating the existing rear structure and introducing an attic, why not introduce an air handler? I'm not spending the money, but at that point, it makes sense to properly heat and cool that room. Uh, CE, is that access to the basement?
Yes, cellar entrance.
Cellar entrance door. Uh, okay, is there, is there access for the architect, is there access to the basement from inside the house?
Yes, the new staircase.
Okay, and you probably would want that for storage for pool equipment and stuff all the way, right? That's all, I guess, I get that, that counts towards your lot coverage. Um, parking clarifications need to be addressed on the plans as far as I'm concerned. Uh, if the driveway's getting expanded, it should be noted. Expansions on bedrooms, um, I appreciate the bunk room, we have a large family myself, uh, again, you know, these type of variance approvals, they go from house, not necessarily the family, um, you know, maybe eliminate the office and have one large bunk room and then encompass it together, uh, as an idea, because then you're probably showing the true four-bedroom house with the office or a bunk room. Driveway should be noted, um, I've done enough construction in my life, although I can appreciate the intent to save existing pavers, probably unlikely, because you're gonna have to store them on site and stack them. Uh, if you introduce an impervious paper, you would bring down your coverages significantly. And then the introduction, the attic in the rear, is that heated and cooled, is that the intention for that?
No.
Cold downstairs for additional storage? Again, there's no garage. But these are all things that I'm looking at personally myself, that I need clarification for lots of, I appreciate the site plan, and I've been reading plans my whole life, there's a lot here, just so can, last comment for what it's worth, um, at that time, you might give consideration to, I appreciate decks and I appreciate pavers, but it might be better just to make it one uniform, flat level area of one to the other, might help with introduction, it might help with your lot coverage, um, and it might create a little bit more privacy between the two dwellings if that's something you were looking to do. So no questions, no comments. Thank you. Mr. Gregg?
Along with what Tony just said, these are conditions of approval, they should be straightened out. We can't really make, we can't really approve this application until some of these things get straightened out, correct?
One question, uh, the rear structure, is the roof structure gonna be redone?
Yes.
And what are you gonna do with that, raise it up?
Raise it up, yeah.
Okay, so, and that's the entire structure?
Yes.
So that's another variance, because you're, you're like one foot away from the rear of the property line, so that's another variance to do that. That wasn't marked, when I got this application, nothing was said about a rear structure being changed, it was only the front structure, so I didn't even look at that.
Ted, did Greg any more questions?
Well, no, just, we have to decide what we're gonna do here.
Okay, do that, the empty floor.
Okay, that's it. Mr. Ross?
On, on the, on the shed, I thought you said you were removing the shed, you're just repositioning the shed?
No, no, we're, we're removing it.
Okay, and then that's just, comes off your impervious?
Yes.
Did you do that?
Yes.
I just, I had that note in the difference line.
Mr. Ross?
All right.
Mr. Luthen?
Okay.
Okay, before we go any further, Kevin, these clarifications have to be met. I think Ted said that the rear structure was, wasn't presented to him. Where, where, would you like to take this before we go any further?
Well, I mean, we can do a couple things, so what I'm sensing I'm hearing, and I could be wrong, but it, it sounds like there are some concerns with, uh, you want more details on the plans, and you're concerned about the fact that, I think Tony said, or probably said, maybe these nice people wouldn't use it as six bedrooms, but the approval's on the land. So I'm, I'm sensing, but I defer to you and I defer to the applicant, that, that the board, um, appears to be looking for plan revisions and plan, uh, details, uh, you may so that you can, um, have a better understanding of what you're looking at and what you're gonna improve, if you ultimately improve it. That's what I'm sensing, and it looks like Ted would need some, uh, details about the, the rear structure and the roof.
So I mean, technically, right now, there's no application concerning the rear structure.
It's only the front structure.
Step first, you have, come in.
Yes, on the initial application, uh, and then afterwards, the owner spoke to Mr. Lawrence here, because it's on crawl space, there's no storage, that's why they were, you're watching the roof, but not the, you know, so, I mean, that wasn't on the initial application, it was on the plan, which I should explain to Ted, that's the first thing. The second thing is, we can note the impervious pavers, we're also stipulating that the back house is for family use only. Fence is gonna go around the property to enclose the plunge pool area, is only gonna be used by family members, so it's not like we have a tenant walking out the door into a plunge pool, it's for family purposes. The AC units, uh, that you so kindly, uh, suggested, we'll put them on a plan, and come back with a repl, uh, a new plot plan to address the issues that you guys are justifiably bringing up, and, um, try and make it the typical two-and-a-half-story home with the rear unit, similar to the prior application, um, to get through. We will also stipulate, as suggested, that the third floor will not have an office and a bunk room, it will be one open room, and if it is allowed, at least Mr. Tool will stipulate that it's not to be used for sleeping purposes. I'm not sure if that's allowed.
Kevin, I don't, I'm not sure if we can move forward without the information for the back building.
I'm, I'm, I'm sensing that.
Would you like to come back to the next meeting?
Yes.
With all that information?
And we'll, we'll have that for the board to review, obviously, long before that meeting.
All right, yeah, and just, uh, just so that in case there's any issues, it would have to be filed 10 days in advance, so you think you can meet that?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question too, before we, um, move to reschedule this? I, I'm very interested to know legally, um, it's, it's fine to stipulate when we're approving an application in terms of use, but how does that, how does that exist moving forward? So if, if these homeowners stipulate to this and, and make the changes, I, I, I thought it was my understanding that that does not run, that's, that's, we can't make, we can't enforce that type of change.
Well, a, a couple things, so excellent question, so I think it's, I know you'd said that, hey, we're only gonna rent the, the, the rear structure out to family only, I don't think that, uh, we've, you've come across recent case law that says that that's not doable, uh, because the courts have viewed that as basically treating, uh, our owners versus, uh, significantly different than renters without a legal basis for doing that, so we can't. But if we had things like, hey, and I'm just making things up, it's only gonna be an X-bedroom house, and the, you know, this room cannot be used for living space, um, typically, when you impose those conditions, you, you typically do those in the form of a deed restriction, so that everyone would know. So on the saying you can't rent it, we can't do that, but if you were gonna say something like, we can only have X number of bedrooms, and that top floor can't be used for X-Y-Z purposes, I think that is legal.
Thank you.
So April, what, what type of, uh, contemplating, and Lady Jensen, for, for?
November thirtieth is, is the next for you, I mean.
Okay, so, um, to the applicant's team, what I would, uh, ask you is, are you okay to carry this to November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, uh, six o'clock PM, without the need for any further public notice?
That would be fine.
Okay, and just for record keeping purposes, do you consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act?
Yes.
Okay, um, again, just to, um, clear, uh, obviously, there's no representations, if, if you do these things, you, you still have to convince the board that they have to see it, hopefully they can prove it for you. But Mr. Chairman, if that's okay, we can have a, uh, a motion to adjourn this application to November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, six o'clock PM, without the need for any further public notice.
I have a motion.
One question. And when you do the rear, give, give me a detail on that roof structure, the height and all, exactly what you're gonna do.
Okay.
Step first.
Uh, I did discuss with the tools, uh, somebody going up, about flipping the pool or, you know, lateral, um, your only objection to that would, it would take off, take away some of the ordinary, our best both families get to a draw, uh, since, I know we can't stipulate, which is why I asked Mr. Kennedy about the back unit, just knowing that the door is going to be there, there's gonna be a fence there, um, and they have gone to great expense to sell their whole indoor, to do this house, as well as family members in the area. I don't think it's going anywhere but this young lady's, right, the variance goes with the property, so you have to take that into consideration.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Kind of quick, in case you're quick on. We have ten feet from a structure for the pool, is that a building structure or deck structure? So can it be less than ten feet from the deck?
It, it, from the deck?
Yeah. I guess I was just.
It actually, it goes by the structure.
Is the deck a structure?
The rear structure is the problem, front structure, what's, what's the distance from the front structure? So if it's over ten feet, it's over ten feet, well, that might be okay for that.
Yeah, so I guess I was just trying to understand, like, if they were to take Tony's recommendation and remove the deck from the front structure and put pavers in, you might be able to shift it to, towards. Yeah, but they've got like eleven, twelve feet, sixteen feet or something, so, so like, I'm, I'm just saying, like, then you're not two feet from the back structure, right? Like, when you come back to us, you might be able to.
Yeah.
Nudge it a little forward and less of a variance might be, might be better, I don't know, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, because.
I guess why does it have five point three feet?
I think that's the deck.
Yes.
They're talking about five foot deck, you know, five foot deck.
And he says, okay.
That's not a problem.
But, but I'm saying, remove the deck, and then you're, you're not five point three from anything, and pavers there, like Tony was suggesting, you know, this is the.
Put it on the deck, why don't you give it to the structure?
Well, that's perfect, right? Like, that doesn't require variance on that part, then, but the other side, you're still gonna be a little bit close, I, I'm just saying, like, it's more power, in a way.
I think they're talking about maybe growing on the deck, but like, I'll discuss that.
Girl, some girl on the papers. That's all, please.
Okay, can I have a motion to extend this application to November thirtieth, under all the conditions that were listed?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. I'll second.
Well, David?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank God, the sugar's a little low, and I didn't want to fall down, I had to, hey.
Thank you.
Yes, here, here, let me die.
So Mr. Chairman, if it's acceptable to the board, I would like, uh, to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing pending and or anticipated engagement.